Good morning. We will now call the special meeting of Waco City Council, March 31st, 2020, to order at 10:00 a.m. All council members are present. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020, until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with social distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, the Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. The audio is being recorded and the meeting is being broadcast live on WCCC.TV. The recording will be available to the public after the meeting. According to the Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interactions between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided, however, that governmental bodies offer alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items, and in an effort to allow for such, as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary by 11:00 p.m. last night. At this time, City Secretary Esmeralda Hudson will read into the record the comments submitted to the city secretary by 11:00 p.m., Monday, March 30th, 2020.
Before I begin reading those, I wanted to read into the record- ...that on the original agenda, under Work Session Item 1, that will be for the record, Work Session 2020-217, and Item 1 under the resolutions will be Resolution 2020-2018. We received one letter that was from local leaders through email that I forwarded to all the council members. That is over the three minutes, so I will have forwarded it to you, and you have that for the record, and we'll put that in the record. And the rest of the items, I will read. Resolution 2020-2020, postponing municipal election by Cody Stat. I write to support the idea of postponing the city election because of the ongoing state of emergency. While I respect the points made by the mayor recently on the issue, it seems imprudent to ask people to go to polling stations for early voting during this time. I thank the members of the council, especially the mayor, for their service and for leading us through this hard time. Resolution 2020-219, continuation of public emergency for COVID-19. Sarah Nazarian, I completely support the efforts to continue shelter in place and close nonessential businesses as long as it takes to prevent further spread of the virus. Drastic action must be taken, continued, and certainly not loosened in order to protect human lives. Resolution 2020-220, consider resolutions postponing the general election. Mito Diaz-Espinosa. In lieu of the current health precautions and safety of citizens wishing to vote, I believe the election should be postponed until we are able to safely conduct an election. Postponing the election will allow for individuals to participate in early voting without violating the shelter-in-place order. Resolution 2020-220, postponing election. Nancy Grayson, this is the reasonable approach to allowing and encouraging all residents of each neighborhood to vote for those who represent them. Under Work Session 2020-217, discussion of the Brazos Promenade Development. Alan D. Northcutt, M.D., the published details of the Brazos Promenade include retail space, restaurants, small office space, hotels, parking courts, parking structure, uncovered parking, streetscape, and open spaces. This project may provide improved quality of life for Waco and business opportunities. However, it should be remembered that the city and the world are facing a climate crisis, and this should be included in the planning. Remember that the U.S. Conference of Mayors unanimously adopted a goal, unanimously approved a resolution that its members, which includes Waco, adopt a goal of becoming 100% renewable-powered. The designers and builders of this project should be required to include green technology in this proposal. We must begin to include climate consideration in all council decisions. Possible solutions in this project include all electricity in all structures, no gas, rooftop solar on all structures in which feasible, covered parking spaces with solar and roofs, 110-volt to 220-volt outlet in some spaces in parking garages, Level 2 and Level 3 EV chargers in parking spaces in hotels, green roofs on larger buildings. These are just a few examples. Developers should be required to incorporate some such green technology in their plans. Thank you. Resolution 220-220, postponing a May election. Sylvia Harrington, it is only prudent to postpone the election at a time when projections show the peak of COVID-19 hitting our area at the end of April. It would be malfalcance to hold an election on May 2nd. Thank you for keeping our public health and safety top of mind. That is all I have, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Thank you, Esmeralda. We're going to go in a little bit of an unusual order here because I think we need to deal with these two priority issues first. So we will deal with Resolutions 2020-219 and 2020-220 before we go into Work Session, and then we'll go into Work Session, Executive Session, and then reconvene Business Session to discuss So Resolution 2020-219 is to consider a resolution continuing the declaration of local disaster and public health emergency issued on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, amended Thursday, March 19th, 2020, and Monday, March 23rd, 2020, by Mayor Kyle Dever, and as ordered by the City Council, the City of Waco, Texas, on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, and as may be amended by the City Council of the City of Waco, Texas, authorizing additional authority related to a local disaster and public health emergency and providing for a penalty. This morning, in the Commissioner's Court meeting at 9:00 a.m., the McClennan County Commissioner's Court extended the date until April 21st for the expiration of their order. I would like to request a motion extending Waco's order until April 21st, and then we'll have, if we could get a second, then we can have discussion on that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion.
We got the resolution, and I guess shortly before the meeting, I asked for a black line from the last resolution. Was there anything else that changed in the, and I haven't had time to look at a black line. I only got it a few minutes before the meeting. Can you just highlight whatever other changes are in here besides the date, if there are any?
So there are no changes past Paragraph 5, except past Paragraph 5, I changed the date till today's date for the effective date, I mean for the signature date.
Kim, not following-
Previous to Paragraph 5, I changed the Fifth Whereas Clause. I took out an ending date for closure of city facilities since they remain closed as we stand here today, and the date was March 29th. And then I added, at the bottom of Page 1, I added a whereas clause that talks about the mayor's March 23rd local disaster declaration.
Right.
And then I added a whereas clause that talks about y'all's action on March 24th. And then the next two whereas clauses, I changed those numbers to reflect the current numbers as of 5:00 p.m. yesterday.
Got it.
And then, when you go to Paragraphs 1 through 5, I added the words "restated" to Paragraphs 2, 4, and 5, and then, or some variation of the word "restated," changing. And then on Paragraph 3, April, there's a blank, and whatever the motion is, if the current motion is for the 21st, that date would go there.
Got it.
And then I added the phrase "unless continued, renewed, or rescinded by the City Council of the City of Waco."
Got it.
And those are the only changes I made from your order of last Tuesday.
So everything else in the body, this is the same as it was?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Jennifer?
I just want to say that I think extending an order like this is something that I certainly don't, and I don't think any other council members take lightly. I think that to the businesses, to the people that are going to, if that have already begun to feel the weight of what we're all walking through and will continue to do so, I think one message that I'd like to communicate is, we're in this with you, and we're going to work together to figure out how our community is stronger and better as a result of this. I do want to commend the mayor and city staff for the task forces that have been assembled. There's a task force for business, social services, health, and communication. My co-council members are chairing that along with community members, and I think that it's an opportunity for our community to come together and collaborate and respond and make this community even stronger at the end of the day and after this. So I just have to communicate that I think what we're doing is grave, but I think it's necessary. And just on a personal note, I think that it's relevant to say this. I urge people that, in their personal lives and in their businesses, if your business can continue to operate as an exception, to really practice social distancing, because I do believe that if we're going to the effort to do this, and we're going to feel the economic consequences of this, we have to take it seriously. So my hope is that we'll continue to practice that social distancing.
I also want to add that this decision is not being made lightly by the city council. We completely comprehend and understand the economic impact that this is having on our local businesses, our businesses that have been built on the backs of men and women in our community, and so we completely understand the effect that it's having. But I hope that people realize also that we are doing this because we really want to take into consideration people's health is our number-one priority right now. And when you're dealing with matter of life or death situations, you know, it's not something that we take lightly. And so I hope people are realizing that the interest of the community is number-one for us, is number-one in our minds. We are going through this with you as well. I know many of my fellow council members have businesses as well, you know, and I know even people that are practicing the shelter in place and are spending longer times at home more than usual. I know sometimes it could be frustrating and inconvenient, but I know that, please know that this is necessary for it to, for this COVID-19 not to spread in our community. And so I appreciate the efforts and the encouraging words that businesses and individuals have sent to us throughout the weeks, just encouraging us to do this. But please know that we are trying with you as much as possible to get through this with you. And I, with Councilmember Meek, want to just remind that social distancing is very important. You know, we've heard even reports of maybe some people getting together in the park for family gatherings, and while the weather's turning beautiful and we have some beautiful parks in Waco, let's just all do this together so we can really get through this and flatten the curve. And so, thank you, Waco, and for being so patient with us, for being cooperative. But please know that decision is not being made lightly, that we are really taking into consideration your health and our health as well.
The only thing I'll add to that, and I agree with all of that, is that the more seriously we take this now, the sooner we can get through it. The more we continue to distance, the more we actually comply with the order, the less interaction we have with one another. We can flatten that curve, reduce the number of people actually getting infected and getting exposed to this, and making sure that our health system doesn't get overwhelmed, and the sooner we can actually get through this. I mean, that's why we're doing this now, why we're taking these extreme measures now. And the more we do it now, the quicker we can overcome and get through and begin to get back to some semblance of normalcy. And again, as far as going to the 21st at this point, I mean, as much as the federal government is providing guidance, you know, the president has extended his, their strong encouragements to do what we're doing until April 30th. So I think there is a recognition at all levels that what we are doing is important and necessary to ensure that our health systems are not overwhelmed and ensure the safety, wellness, and well-being and health of all of our citizens.
I'll just make a comment on, yeah, I think it makes, like what all my fellow council members are saying, I think it makes sense to go to the 21st on these measures. But I do want to change gears up a little bit on, I really want to make sure that we're collecting data as we go through. I talked about this in the last deal. But for us to know that we're getting better, we need to keep, we need to keep track of this data day by day. And I've had some suggestions on what we need to do, and I know that we are publicizing this number, whatever, 39 or whatever, which is an important number. But the day-to-day trend analysis is what we need to be keeping track of. And I just want to make sure that whatever resources that our public health district needs to gather that information, I want to make sure that we have them, because the day-to-day is what we need to be keeping track of, because that's the trend. That's the, are we getting worse, are we getting better? And that's positive cases, cases requiring hospitalization, cases requiring ICU, discharge from the hospital, fatalities. We need to make sure we have a very objective measurement on these items day by day, so we know if we're getting better or we're getting worse. And the other side of that equation to me is also what are our capacities? And the number of physicians, the number of nurse practitioners, pulmonologists, anesthesiologists, doctors in general, and also our infrastructure, hospital beds, ICU beds, ventilators, as we talk about. We need to, at least the council and the mayor, I think, and the city mayor, we need to know these things and see if we're approaching certain capacities in this crisis. I don't, my instinct is that we're not. I think it's a very flat curve right now for us. I mean, but I do anticipate it's going to not get better. But as it does get worse, let's be intelligent about what is, what are our capacities, what percentage of capacity are we on a very local level? So I want to make sure that we are empowered, and I'm going to need feedback from, you know, staff, are we empowered to get that kind of information and develop it here in the short term? So that's a big point that I want to make, because I'm all about data and trend analysis, and we're not, it doesn't seem like we really have too much of that going on yet locally. The other thing I want to say is, and each one of us has been tasked with, as Dylan, as Councilmember Meek said, a kind of organizing a group to address the COVID crisis, and mine is the Business and Individual Economic Recovery. And I just want to thank the chamber, the three chambers, city chambers and Startup Waco. I mean, the feedback, the collaboration, and the collegiality there has been fantastic, and the problem-solving and the brainstorming, because there's a lot of programs out there that we can access, that business members of Waco can access, and we need to be taking advantage of SBA programs. And there's also a very healthy local banking community that we, that people need to be reaching out to with those relationships. So we've got some resources, you know, we're going to get better and better as each day passes in communicating these kind of solutions. So I want to, Mayor, I applaud you for kind of giving each of us a responsibility to kind of get things rounded up and organized. And I think at least ours is off to a pretty good start. That's, and I support going to the 21st on this deal.
Not much to say, but I do echo that, the sentiment of my council members and colleagues, and with the understanding that this is just an unbelievable task that we have been, you know, assigned, but we do so with ease, because the health and wellness of our community and our constituents is our number-one priority, period. How we go about doing that with the understanding that people's lives and their livelihoods are at stake bears weight to the heaviness of this responsibility. So I applaud you, sir, our mayor, and our fellow council members, our staff, for their unending work. We can't do any of this without you and your support and your diligence and dedication. We have a lot of work yet to do with this, and I agree with Councilmember Holmes about how we go about fighting this fire. The information is essential because we can't go blindly into fighting a fire. So I do echo and agree with your request for data because it's helpful. I understand that the information is sensitive and with no intention to create panic, but I think for us to do the jobs that we're assigned to do, it's essential that we have it. There are many things, and the work teams that have been established are helping. You know, we're getting information to those organizations and individuals. I'm tasked with social services and education, and what we're trying to do is make sure that the organizations that are already assigned to those tasks, who are already working in those fields, have everything they need to do the job that they've already been doing. So it's, I have kind of likened it to if you were pushing a door open, you know, you just needed a little more help, you know, doing that, because you're already pushing the door open. It's your door to open, right? Just consider us a little extra muscle. And I think that that's the position that we want to take as a city, because it's not, you know, our tasks are what our tasks are, you know. Again, infrastructure, making sure that city services run and do the things that we do, that's what we are tasked to do. We in the "us" sense of the word. But the organizations and entities that are involved in those types of businesses, the business leaders, the health leaders, the social services and education leaders, their task is what it is. And we're just adding a little help in making sure that in COVID-19, they have all the tasks that they need. So the work is happening, you know, we're finding other resources and additional resources. I know myself, and I'm sure other council members are getting information and resources from other cities, of best practices and things that are working or not working, and we're sharing them amongst one another. We're sharing them with those leaders, so making sure that the information that we have, you know, you have, because that's the only way that we're going to continue to do this, in addition to our staying safe at home and practicing our social distancing and our 20-second-hand washing and all that business. But I support your decision to extend to the 21st, whether we follow federal government or extend to the 30th, whichever it be, we need to make sure that we stay ahead of keeping Waco unsafe.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments, and thank you all for the great work that you're doing to help move our community forward and keep us safe during this time. I want to go over a few things regarding why the 21st. First, we consulted yesterday with Dr. Werner, our health authority, and infectious disease specialist, with Dr. Gray, our Health District Director, and Veda He, our epidemiologist. Also talked to the CEOs of all our healthcare networks, and they all recommended at least an extension through the 21st. Our cases are continuing to rise in McClennan County. As of yesterday, we had 39 confirmed cases in our county. Four cases are in critical condition as of yesterday. I know that more than that are on ventilators, more people than that are on ventilators, and it's a little bit difficult getting the timing synchronized on all this reporting. Counties in North Texas, Central, North Central Texas and North Texas are beginning to climb more rapidly. We are about two weeks behind the curve that New York is on, and all you have to do is look there to see how devastating this can be and how seriously we must take this here. The shortage of testing has made all the data more difficult to analyze, and will continue to make it difficult to analyze as testing becomes more prevalent. It will be difficult, if not impossible, to judge exactly what's happening in our county on a county-by-county basis. But we can look to what has worked in other places and what has not worked. And that's, that to me is the most important thing. We will certainly continue to look at the data, and we'll look at the testing and the confirmed cases and hospitalizations and ICUs. But just be aware, I mean, I think hospitalizations and ICU beds that are being occupied and ventilators that are being used are a pretty good measure of what's going on here, more so than the confirmed tests. I think it's really important for us to be aligned with the county. I so appreciate Judge Felton and his leadership in this, as well as the county commissioners. Appreciate them extending this to April 21st. I think that's a smart thing to do. I think it's also important for people to recognize that we will be examining this again before April 21st, and the chances are, in my estimation, that we will be extending beyond April 21st. We felt it was important for us to act today to give people fair notice that April 7th was not going to be the end date. And so we will try to meet and confer before April 21st so that we can give people as much advanced notice as possible. We're trying to balance that with the need to be able to adjust as we get new information. And so everything is a little bit of a balancing act here. I appreciate you all bringing up the working teams, and I really appreciate the work that the working teams are doing, led by council members and community volunteers. You know, one thing that I've gotten a lot of emails about is people who are self-employed or in very small businesses and wondering what they can do because they're not able to work right now, particularly from people who run, like, hair salons and nail salons, those kinds of things. Those people are eligible right now for unemployment compensation, and they need to know that. They're also potentially eligible for a forgivable loan from the government, from the Small Business Administration. And our chambers and Startup Waco are working feverishly to get that up on their websites so that people can understand how to access those resources, and those should be up hopefully by tomorrow. But there are resources out there, and it's really important for our people to access those resources and not be shy about accessing those resources. They're there because this is a national emergency situation. We are all concerned about the economy and the effect it's orders having on our businesses, their workers, and their families. And we think about that every day, I promise you. But we must put safety first while we continue to balance that with the negative economic impact of this. That's all I have. Is there any other discussion?
Just wanted to make sure you added that it's folks in the gig economy, just particularly, you know, so that includes artists who are gig economy, Uber drivers, that kind of thing. They are also included in that measure.
Yeah, that's a great, great point, Andre. All those people are now eligible for unemployment who normally would not be, and so you need to be looking into those resources. Please poll the council.
Huh?
Aye.
Meek?
Yes.
Kinnar?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Fairfield?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes, that motion carries, and the order is extended until April 21st. Thank you. Next, we will consider a resolution postponing the general election scheduled to be held on May 2nd, 2020, for the purposes of electing a mayor-at-large and council members for District 1 and 3 to the November 3rd, 2020, uniform election date, providing that if an earlier date occurring after May 2nd, 2020, but before November 3rd, 2020, is authorized by the governor of the state of Texas, the city council may consider holding the general election on such earlier date, providing that the city of Waco is exercising its authority to postpone the general election pursuant to the proclamation of the governor of the state of Texas dated March 18th, 2020, and subsequent proclamations, orders, or other forms of authorization, if any, of the governor of the state of Texas. Providing a definition of postponed election, providing that candidate filings for the postponed election shall remain valid for the postponed election, and that the filing period for candidates will not be reopened for the postponed elections. Providing that all applications for a ballot by mail for voters who are voting by mail due to being over the age of 65 or due to disability or other reason will still be valid for the postponed election, and applications for ballot by mail for voters who submitted those based on expected absence from the county will not be valid for the postponed election. Those would need to be resubmitted. Setting forth the major relevant dates if the election is held on November 3rd, 2020, and setting forth a major relevant dates if the election is held on a date earlier than November 2020. I'd like to get a motion on that, and then a second, and then we can have discussion.
Moved for approval.
Second.
All right, discussion. I'd like to lead off just a little bit, and then I know others have things that they'd like to say about this. This has been a very fluid situation for the last two or three weeks. And late last week, we had said we would continue to work towards a May 2 election, but we pointed out that if we were not convinced we could conduct a safe and fair election, we would postpone it. We've, as I said, we've been evaluating on a daily basis, even on an hourly basis, how things are going with COVID-19 and how that might affect the election. We began our communication effort late last week to let people who are at high risk of serious illness for COVID-19 know that they were eligible to vote by mail. We felt this was really important and will continue to be important. Anyone who is at high risk of serious illness from COVID-19 qualifies as disabled for purposes of voting. And so when the election comes, if COVID-19 is still around, whether that is in July or November, we want you to apply for ballot by mail if you're at high risk so that you have the best chance to vote. We also began working on measures that could be taken to make that May 2 election as safe as possible, things like holding the election in larger voting centers than we typically use so that we could have adequate social distancing, how we would do things like sanitize workers' hands and try to keep all of that safe. But things continued to evolve, and on Friday, Judge Felton expressed his concern to me withholding an election on May 2. That's important, as we said earlier, it's really important for us to try to stay aligned as closely as possible with the county and with the Commissioner's Court and Judge Felton as possible as we work through this COVID-19 crisis. And this is part of that decision. Over the weekend, President Trump extended his social distancing recommendations for the United States until April 30th, and we just extended our order- the United States until April 30th, and we just extended our order until April 21st. This gets us into the previously scheduled early voting time, which was to have begun on April 20th. And so for those reasons, I feel that we are now at a position where we need to postpone this election until November 3, which is the only option that the governor has so far given us. We will be formally requesting, or I will be formally requesting, an order from Governor Abbott to allow us to have the election on the same day that the runoff from the primary will be held in July. And so if he will give us that, I think it would be preferable, subject to you all agreeing with that, to go ahead and have that election in July. But for now, we would have to postpone until November, and that's all I have. I'd like to hear from other council members.
I'll just say I'm in support of this. I don't like the idea of subjecting any of our candidates to the vagaries of the November general election and the partisanship that is involved. We, as a council, have been fiercely nonpartisan to this point, and so just having that on that same cycle, I think, there are challenges associated with that, but at the same time, just for all the reasons you've stated, Mayor, I think, given the current status of just all of this, postponing it makes sense. I do think, I also am fully supportive, you know, hopefully the governor sees some reason and we can have an earlier than November date. I'd be fully supportive of that as soon as, it just seems everything are free. I think this, the time that we have and the leeway we've been granted, given that hopefully as the, you know, as we flatten the curve and as the, we work our way through into the spring, and hopefully we see some improvement in the eventuality that fall rolls around and we see another spike of this for some reason, that we have, that we are also pushing for any measures that could allow for remote or universal mail-in ballots or anything to help make sure that when we are, the election has to happen, and if we have another, and if the environment is such in the fall where we're having other problems such as this where we happen to reinforce social distancing or something, in that eventuality, I think we should be working towards contingencies now to make sure that we are well-prepared for whenever we, because we have, we need to have an election soon, as soon as we're allowed to, past May 2, obviously. And so just planning and making sure that we're ready so that we'll be able to conduct one fairly and freely and safely for everybody. But beyond that, I mean, I support this, I just don't think we, May 2 is just too soon based on everything you've said.
You know, I agree with my fellow council member, Canard, you know, I do think that postponing the May elections to a later date, hopefully it would be summer with the approval of Governor Abbott, because I know that it would be very difficult and very complex for our local elections to be together with national elections and federal elections that are taking place. You know, once again, this is a decision that's not taken lightly. We, you know, having the ability to vote is one of our rights as Americans, and we take that very seriously, but we don't want to do it at the point where we're endangering our community, our citizens. And so I hope that, you know, people know that we've heard your request, and please know that this is a sign even on council's part to say, hey, we want to make sure that everyone in our community is safe, and so if it means postponing our elections to a later date in the year, then so be it, because once again, our priority is public safety and making sure that the community's health is being the number one consideration we are taking into place, and so that's why I'm in favor of this.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with what we're doing here. I think it's consistent with our, the other public safety measures we're taking. And just to clarify, it's a binary choice here. I think if it would have been, I think minds would have come up with, let's put this out 60 days or some number, but we can't do that. It's either the May 2 or November 3. So we tried to do, I think we tried to get it on May 2 until we saw this public safety issue approaching, and so we were pulling back and saying it's not the right thing to do. And right now, we only have November 3. I mean, for all the reasons that John and Hector and the mayor spoke, I think it makes sense to keep the elections separate, so if we can get it before November 3, I'm in favor of that too, which we are allowing ourselves to do in this measure.
I'm not going to say much because I'm a candidate in this cycle, but I do have some questions. My questions are, I know that in the, in the elections rules, that there are a number of days that one can campaign and have active signage out, and I know, I want to know what those changes are with this change.
Good point.
Because they're already out there, and I mean, does that mean that they have to be picked up? I mean, does that mean that, you know, put back, I need to know the answers to that. And then, secondly, I agree with the ask, in asking Governor Abbott for the July 14 date, but I wanted to make sure, in reference to Councilman Canard, that our Elections Coordinating Office will be readied at that time, because we can't, you know, be asking for yes and then get to, oh, well, I'm not ready to do this, so I need to make sure that they're on board. You know, and I know we work very closely and very succinctly with the county, so I'm hoping that the Elections Office will be prepared as well, because we've already made our ask public.
Councilmember Barfield, on the question about the campaigning, that is something we're just going to have to check into. We don't know the answer to that right this second, but we will find an answer and get that information to you.
Very good.
As soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion?
And while we are, Mayor Potem Barfield brought up a good point, while we are working with the Elections Office, you know, I know previously we brought up some concerns about maybe some lack of polling locations, and this would be a great opportunity to really address those locations and see if maybe we can work around, we can incorporate our concerns as well as we prepare for a later election, so I just wanted to bring that up as well.
Thank you, thank you. And a couple of you have pointed out that this was only, our only choice was November 3, and that really made this decision much more difficult, but I think it's, I think we're at that point now, and we've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please poll the council.
Aye.
Me?
Yes.
Canard?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Barfield?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes, that motion carries, and the election is for now postponed until November 3, subject to possibly getting an earlier date other than May 2. We will now recess the business session and convene a work session. We have one item on the work session, it's Work Session 2020-218, and I'll ask our city manager, Wiley Stem, to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, our work session is a discussion of the Brazos Promenade Development, including a proposed amendment to the development agreement with Catalyst Urban Development LLC. We have our Executive Director of Economic Development, Millet Harrison, and she will make a brief presentation and then introduce our guest.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good to see you today. We are here, as Wiley said, just to briefly talk to you about a possible amendment.
I can't hear her, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good morning.
There you go.
Okay. Sorry. This is not the best mic in the group. So for your consideration today, we do have an amendment before you, so I'd like just to briefly review what that is. It's an amendment to the development agreement between the city and Catalyst Urban Development LLC, and specifically changing the project commencement deadline from March 20th to April 7. Just a brief recap of the project, because on March 3, we did review this more in depth, but the location of the project is along University Parks Drive and in between University Parks Drive and the Brazos River, moving back towards I-35, and if you'll pardon my fantastic drawing, this gives you a little more detail of the specific or the concentrated area of the project itself, but also, as a reminder, the entire site plan does include improvements up and down University Parks Drive and along Webster on those blocks that were previously circled. So just a quick recap of sort of where we are, a development timeline. We started with an RFP process, as we typically do for developments like this, particularly on city-owned land. That was actually occurred on March 16, 2015, where we issued that. We got proposals back, Catalyst Urban Development was selected to be the developer we moved forward with into negotiations. In December of 2015, we entered into an initial MOU, memorandum of understanding with Catalyst. There were a few extensions to that MOU as we worked through some environmental concerns on the property, both sides did some due diligence, and also began negotiations of contracts and incentives, so three extensions to that piece. I would point out that the environmental was cleared in February of 2018, so that was one of the pieces that was involved in those extensions. Development agreement timeline, the original development agreement that came before you in December of 2016 was approved by you, however, negotiations did continue on that particular document, and then in August 7, we brought an amendment to a resolution that approved that document. Specifically, the major change was changing it from, instead of three phases, into four, and then making that effective date for that development agreement. You see MDA on the screen, that's Master Development Agreement, that's how we refer to it quite frequently, but the development agreement had an effective date of August 7, 2018, and then most recently, you did amend it to allow a little additional time changing the commencement deadline from February 7, 2020, to March 20, 2020, but also at that time, at that last, that March 3 meeting, we did provide some additional funding in the amount of $2,838,877 to provide for some additional, quite frankly, pretty beefed-up infrastructure in some cases, but some additional development on the project. So the item for your consideration today is the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement with Catalyst Urban Development to extend the Phase 1 commencement deadline from March 20, 2020, and we specifically have asked for it to be at 1 o'clock on April 7, 2020, so we have a time certain in a particular day. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Does Catalyst have a presentation, or are you just planning to take questions?
Just have a few comments if you'd all like.
Mayor and Council, it's good to see you all. You know, the last three weeks since we've been here, obviously, a lot has gone on. I know how busy we've been with our offices closed during that period. I can't imagine, or it's hard to imagine, how busy you all have been, so through your prior actions, it's another testament to us that we appreciate your leadership and your service to this community, and that is important to us. The good news from our standpoint is that on the 20th, we actually closed our financing. We closed into escrow, albeit, we appreciate your staff because they were right there minute by minute, and it went into the evening time, but we did close our financing as you had requested us to do. It's all at title. The reason construction hasn't begun out there is because we haven't received the construction contract back signed from the city yet, so that's what we need, and then authorization to record the ground lease. And with those two things, if that can happen today, we could be out tomorrow under construction. We're ready to go, and we have been for the last 10 days.
So, so our original agreement was for you to have construction started by March 20, is that right?
Well, evidence of financing and construction start, it was part of the definition of construction start. We actually had our folks out there onsite to start on that Friday. They jumped the gun a little bit because the construction contract hadn't been signed.
Okay, and what's the holdup on getting the construction agreement signed?
My understanding is the, it was, because the extension went to the 20th, it was an issue of authority to be able to sign. On that Friday, the 20th, when we did get everything into title, I don't think that there was someone with, that was able to sign the document still at City Hall, so that then kicked into Monday, and I think that we, you know, everyone realized that there was an issue of authority. You all had given the authority through the 20th, therefore, we're here today to talk through that. But I do want to reiterate that we have closed our financing, it's all at title, to get out of financing, to get out of title, we just need the construction contract signed, and we need to be able to record the ground lease.
Why did it take till the 11th hour on March 20? I mean, that was just not my impression at all at the last meeting, they would go near that long, and so I, this has been a long story of missing deadlines, and since I've been on council, we've been negotiating, trying to get ground broken over there with you guys, and I just, what's going to change? Why is it going to be different going forward? Why should we do this and expect not having to come back with amendment after amendment after amendment in anticipation of actual construction happening?
Well, I could tell you, the fact that we've closed, and we closed into escrow, is testament, as you all have gone through that process, that it's done. We just need the contract executed so that we can begin construction, we're ready to do that tomorrow. There's no issue there.
But if you would have had, if you would have had financing done before the 11th hour on March 20, we would have executed the contract, wouldn't we have?
Yeah, and there's a lot that leads up to that point, but I would tell you that, obviously, with all the effort that you all have been going through, we were going through similar efforts as it relates to the COVID crisis, with our office closed and all the folks that we work with closed, but we were able to bring everything together on that date to be able to close the financing, lenders included. You understand where the market's been, et cetera. Just to be able to move through that, I agree, it was a bit inefficient. We should have been earlier than that, but as everything continued to drop, it took a lot of effort to get to the point, and we're still, we're still at that point, we're ready to go, lender's good, everything's good. We just need the ability to record our ground lease and start construction.
Does staff recommend us moving forward? What's our recommendation? Do you all have a recommendation? If you don't, that's fine, I just...
We're going to have a discussion.
We're not voting on it today, right? This is an information, but yeah, I think that's a good question.
Yeah, we would defer to executive session for recommendation.
So to follow up on Dylan's questions, I was certainly under the impression that at the last meeting, that it was just a matter of days to getting this done, getting financing closed, and all of that was way before we started getting into this COVID-19 thing, so I don't, I don't want to get those two things conflated because I think that's easy to do. So what was the reason that we didn't get it done in those first few days, as we were led to believe?
I think there's multiple things, and I'll talk through it. The first is, has to do with the construction contract itself. There were iterations of that contract going back and forth with our own contractor that were communicated back to the city. When we got the revised contract back from the city, we thought all those changes would be done, we sent that over to the contractor in the days leading up to the closing, discovered there, kind of at last minute, there were some items that hadn't been picked up. They made those changes in the contract, sent that back, but you know, the way that red line works, it looked like the final contract had had a lot of changes in it, there weren't a lot of changes in it, there was one having to do with pandemic, but all the others had been agreed to by all parties, but when the draft came back, it looked like there was a lot of red line in there. Look, I do apologize for the inefficiency, I know it's been a long time coming, but we are here, we've spent the money, we've been through the whole process of permitting, we've had the approvals from the city in that regard, we have been able to keep capital together in this process, and we are there, ready to close. And as I mentioned yesterday, we're ready to issue a notice to proceed tomorrow.
So I do appreciate the fact that you all invested a lot of money in this, and I appreciate that. We've been waiting five years to get this thing done too, and that's been a real toll on our citizens who have expected to be, you know, have parts of this completed by now, not just under construction. I've been going to state of the city addresses every year, the last four years, saying this is starting anytime. So I'm as frustrated as anybody on the council about where we are now. You mentioned that there was a change related to pandemic, and one of the major changes, major concerns I have is that we execute this contract, and then all of a sudden, you and/or your contractors claim that we're in a forced maturer situation, and they can't proceed, and then we're stuck for God knows how much longer. So what kind of assurances can you give us around that?
Well, as it relates to the onsite contract, we are the ones taking that risk. I can tell you, we are thankful that the governor has identified, as you all know, construction is a vital industry, so that's very positive in that regard. I can tell you that in a lot of conversation with our contractor, we've talked a lot about that subject over the last several weeks. They have assured us that their subs are there, they're ready to go, these are people that need to work, so we are thankful that that portion of our economy is still moving and hasn't been shut down in that regard. We don't see that coming. Obviously, we don't have the benefit of your, you know, which you all see day to day, but from our standpoint, we have other projects under construction as well, we haven't seen that. One of the concerns that we've had has been, will the inspectors of the city be there? We're, you know, trustful that that will continue, because obviously, that's important for construction, but we have had a lot of discussion with our contractor on this issue. We certainly wouldn't be taking that risk on if... We certainly wouldn't be taking that risk on if we felt that that was going to come to bear.
Okay, other questions?
I'll just say that, yeah, this project is real important to the city, and as Mayor said, kind of, it's been on all of our radars since we've gotten on council, and it seems to be, keep getting pushed, and I'm sure there's always reasons for it, but there's a term in banking we call extend and pretend, and that is not a good situation. I mean, if there's, if there's true issues that you're having, just, you know, we can, we can all be, we're all busy, we're a lot of businessmen up here. We understand if things aren't coming together. But I just, we need to come up with either a two-step deal where we can get this construction thing done in 24 hours or 48 hours, and then commence next week or however you want to, but we really need to bring it to a head. And I've seen, we've all seen deals, you know, last long, just under fatigue, we're kind of ready to, you know, move on. But, and the force majeure issue, as the mayor brought up, is can tie us into even a longer situation where nothing's happening. So I think we want to be careful about that. I look forward to talking more about this at executive session.
To respond to your two-step process, we're open to that. If you would like to have--
Have a modification of a 24-hour window to close, you know, to get everything signed and done with commencement, we quite frankly don't even need a two-step process. We could go in, and we could commit to a commencement as of tomorrow, if that's a desire to show our level of commitment. I mean, we're, when Paris mentioned, everything is at title, it's signed, sealed, money, everything is sitting there waiting for essentially a notice to proceed on the construction.
Yeah, we've been having conversations literally daily since the 20th with our lender and the contractor, sometimes twice a day, over this issue as to why we haven't started. They're still committed to moving forward with us, they're excited about, you know, the meeting today and be able, hopefully with your approval, be able to get moving. But that's, we're there.
Okay, any further questions? All right, thank you, we appreciate you all being here to answer our questions and give us your view of this. Before we, before we recess to executive session, I just received news that we had our first death in McLean County this morning. We'll have more information about that later, as we're able to share it. But ask for your prayers for the family. We'll now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session, as read into the record by the City Secretary at 10:53 a.m.
Notice is hereby given to City Council, going to executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071; economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087; and real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072; Brazos River Front Development, AKA Brazos Promenade. We are now in executive session at 10:53 a.m.
Leading business session on March 31, 2020, at 12 o'clock p.m. We have one resolution left to consider, and it's Resolution 2020-218, considering a resolution approving a second amendment to the development agreement with Catalyst Urban Development LLC, developer for Phase 1 of the Brazos River, Riverfront Development, AKA Brazos Prominent, Promenade Project, to extend the Phase 1 commencement deadline of the project from March 20, 2020, to 1 p.m. on April 7, 2020, and authorizing the City Manager to execute any documents in connection therewith. Is there a motion?
Motion to deny request.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? I'll just say that while we appreciate everything that you all have done to, I don't, I don't believe we're, can we take, I think Mr. Rutherford would like to speak at this point. We can do that within this setting. If you have some comments, we'd be glad to hear them.
I understand where things are, and I appreciate the motion that's been brought forward to you all. I just would like to reiterate that we, there are many items, and we're happy to follow up with you, and we will, if you will give us the opportunity to, that have caused inefficiency along the way. But regardless of the past, we are fully funded in escrow and ready to start the project that we've all worked so many years on together to get going. We are here, there's no, there's no question about that. It's in title at this point. So, you know, there's been a lot of good effort, a lot of well-meaning effort, that have slowed the project down along the way, from a design standpoint, and scope standpoint, and procedural standpoint, and lots of things that we can get into detail. But I really hope that you reconsider that motion, because this is real, we can start tomorrow, there is no question about that. If you were to tell us you have until 1 p.m. tomorrow, we're good with that. We're ready to go, the money's there, we're good. And I really hope you reconsider that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your comments, and I just have to say that, you know, we were told, staff was told that you all would be going three days after the last, last meeting. When you got in here, that changed to 10 days, and it didn't get done by the 20th. And so I'm at the place now where I can't vote in favor of, of amending the deadline and extending it to April 7, personally. We do have a motion, is there any further discussion?
I guess I would say, I think I fall in line with the mayor on this, that even though we've, I can't support an extension, I still think we can be open to dialogue on what, what happens here. We're all hopeful, we were all hopeful that this would happen, you know, last year and earlier this year, and the 20th, where I think that was kind of our, this is our last second chance, or whatever you want to call it. But I'm still hopeful that something can happen here, but even without an extension approval.
Okay, any further discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes.
Aye.
Meek.
Yes.
Canard.
Yes.
Sabido.
Yes.
Bearfield.
Yes.
Dever.
Yes, the motion carries, and the resolution to amend to April 7 is denied. Before we adjourn, I'd like to say a couple more things, just to our, to our citizens. We really need you to do everything you can to abide by the social distancing requirements and the stay-at-home order. This is the only way that we can change the trajectory of COVID-19. For the things that you must go out to purchase, like groceries and other essential items, please send one person to the store. We are putting other people, other shoppers, as well as the workers in those stores, at risk by sending multiple people. That makes it that much harder to abide by social distancing guidelines. We do want you to get outside and exercise, but when you do that, please be sure that you're keeping a six-foot distance, at least, from anyone who does not live inside your household. Wash and sanitize your hands after you touch any surface outside your home. Before we went into executive session, I passed on a sad news that we've had our first death of COVID-19 in McLean County. We'll give more information of that as it becomes available. I ask again for the prayers, for your prayers for the family of the victim. This is a tragic death, and we must do what we can to keep the number of deaths as low as possible. I appreciate those of you that have said that you're praying for us on the council. That is meaningful to all of us, and is real. I ask that you pray for our healthcare community, because there is a gathering storm for them. They are the ones that are on the front line, and they need your prayers. So for now, stay home, stay safe, let's slow the spread in our community. We will get through this, but it's going to take patience, and it's going to take resolve from all of us to do it. We're adjourned at 12:06, thank you.